Call to order, the December 12th, Chaska Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Bowie, here.
Cross.
Here.
Dahlke.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Keporth.
Here.
Pfeiffer.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Kelly, second by Cross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Visitor presentation. This is an opportunity for anyone with a subject that is not on our agenda to present to the Planning Commission. So I'd like to open it up if anyone would like to present at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the visitor presentation. And I need a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes.
I so move.
Moved by Commissioner Cross.
I'll second.
And a second by Commissioner Dahlke. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Consent items. I need a motion to approve the consent items.
I'll move to approve the final plat for Club West 8th Edition Traditions Development.
Moved by Commissioner Bowie, in a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. On to the action items. 7A, the conditional use permit for Carver Scott Humane Society. Liz?
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. We have a conditional use permit request tonight for, from Carver Scott Humane Society, Carver Scott County Humane Society, at 822 Yellow Brick Road here in Chaska. And the CUP request is specifically for them to have animal operations and the housing of cats at this site address. So to give you a background, Carver Scott Humane Society is a nonprofit animal rescue organization. They've been serving the community since 1989. If you can remember, for some of you, about three years ago, we also reviewed a CUP request for the same organization to have the same operation at 210 Chestnut Street here in downtown Chaska. Since that time, their business has grown significantly. They're servicing a lot more animals and because of that, they're outgrowing the space that they're currently at at 210 Chestnut Street. So tonight, they're looking at a new site here within downtown that will provide more space for their activity and for the serve, service that they're providing for these animals. So again, their long-range plan is to hopefully build a shelter within either the Scott or Carver County area that would basically be their permanent residence and help service those animals. But in the short term, they do have to find a temporary space, a much larger temporary space, to continue to serve the public and the animals that are in need. So that's why they've focused their attention on 822 Yellow Brick Road here in town to provide their short-term need for them. So to give you an understanding of where that site is located, it is located in the Burke Yard Shopping Center, which is right off of Yellow Brick Road. Arby's is basically Kitty Corner to this site. The old KFC building is to the south of them. And then Cooper's is also attached to the same strip center. So they're locating on the corner tenant space of the Burke Yard Shopping Center. So again, they're asking for a conditional use permit request tonight to allow animals and housing of cats at 822 Yellow Brick Road. This location is located in a planned commercial district, specifically PCD III, which does not list animal operations as a permitted use within that district. Therefore, they have to pursue a conditional use permit for this type of use. So again, they're requesting animals on-site, adoptions, and potential training classes and housing of cats at this location. So it's pretty in line, kind of with the same operations that they did at their older facility. They provided a floor plan of basically how the space is going to break down in terms of the services that they're providing there. Again, this is a much larger space compared to their older one. This one's roughly at 2,400 square feet in size. The other one was 2,200 square feet in size. However, only about half of it was usable for the operations that they were doing there. So essentially, they're kind of doubling the space to be able to provide services to these animals. And one thing of note, this space will be specifically for cats and dogs only. They're not going to have any other type of domestic animals taken into these, into this facility as the other location did. So it's purely just cats and dogs and providing adoption services through that facility. So with a CUP, we do have to review a set of standards in order for the conditional use permit to be approved and validated. So there are six standards that are looked at, and I'm going to go through a couple that are applicable tonight. So the first one, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, comfort, or general welfare. So with this business operations, they do have to comply with certain requirements that are administered by the Minnesota Board of Animal Health. So their old facility and even this facility will comply with those standards in order for them to continue their operations. That basically sets standards in terms of how they upkeep the conditions of the place. They are also a resource to help with behavior problems, the privately owned pets, and they'll facilitate adoptions for different animals that are being fostered at foster homes. The second standard that has to be met, the special use will not be interest to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood. So all the operations and all the animals will stay within the building and controlled by staff. So with every animal that they bring in, they will have a staff person and volunteer accompanying the animal. So there won't be any animal that's left alone by itself. Only cats will be housed overnight, so no dogs are being held overnight at this facility, which is consistent with how the other facility was operating. And with the cats staying overnight, they will be monitored daily and cleaned up after daily as well. So that no orders or other nuisances would occur because of that. And one of the other standards that I wanted to mention was standard C. The establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in that district. So again, everything is happening indoors. None of the operations will be outdoors where people can see it. Based on the other conditions that we set forth for the previous facility, we did limit the amount of dogs and cats and frequency of events at that older facility, which is basically being carried over as a part of this conditional use permit. It seemed to operate well as a part of that conditional use permit, so we did carry over a majority of those conditions that were set forth. There are other veterinary and animal businesses here within downtown. There's a couple vets within the downtown core area that have been doing quite well with basically the same operations being held there. This operation being in downtown also did quite well. We didn't have any complaints that came about as a part of this operation. And therefore, their relocation to this new facility does not pose too many concerns for staff based on their consistent operations being proposed there. So we do have a set of conditions that are laid out for this conditional use permit. And again, most of this is kind of carried from our older CUP since it operated quite well. The difference, though, with this one is the maximum number of cats that they're proposing. So the last CUP allowed 12 cats. This one will allow for 30 cats to stay overnight in this facility. And that's based on the size of this new space, being that it's much larger than the previous one, and they'll have more staff people as a part of this newer facility. Another consistent condition is housing, boarding of dogs or other animals other than cats will not be permitted. So that'll carry over with this one. The last one, and from the information that we received in their initial request, was the site will be limited to six dogs at a time at this site, including but not limited to the training classes and adoption days that they do there. The applicant will probably make a request tonight to up that number to 20 dogs, kind of based on what they're envisioning there in terms of their operations and services. So that's definitely a discussion I'd, tonight, if that's how they're proposing to move forward. Another condition, small domestic animals are allowed on-site only during pet adoption days. However, non-domestic animals and animals such as, but not limited to, horses, cows, chickens, or roosters are not allowed. So it's purely putting a condition in place that limits the type of animals that are coming to this facility. Condition number six, pet adoption days at this site are permitted at maximum of once per month. They will, the applicant will probably ask to eliminate this condition altogether based on the fact that the operations are changing a little slightly in terms of how they're facilitating adoptions. Before, they were doing pet adoption events where they would market a certain day within the month for people to come in and adopt pets. But this will be more of an open hours facility where people can drop in and set up an adoption time when they want. So this condition is probably not applicable to this request tonight and how they're planning to operate because it'll be more of an open hours and set up an appointment time when needed type of facility versus a full-on event date, driving in traffic. Another condition, training classes for animals are restricted to once per week, as noted in their application before. Outdoor storage of any kind will not be permitted and compliance with 14.74 of the zoning ordinance, which relates to granting conditional use permits must be adhered to. So we believe with the conditions that are put in place, 1 through 5, and then 7 through 9, with the note of six dogs and a discussion on the amount of dogs that they might be proposing tonight is applicable and appropriate. So based on those conditions, the way they're worded in our staff report, we do make a recommendation of approval of the conditional use permit for the animal operations and housing of cats at 822 Yellow Brick Road, subject to the conditions that I just spelled out for you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, we do have the applicant here in the audience to, to help answer questions about the operation and request.
Liz, I have a question.
Yep.
Many of the conditions that I see in here appear to be a description of the applicant's mode of doing business. Is there something in the city requirements that, beyond this, that drove these, some of these constraints? Like for item number seven, with the number of dog adoption days? Or is that just, here's what we do, so we'll just put that in the CUP?
Right. And a lot of it has to do with kind of what happens with the operation. I mean, when you get a lot of animals in one place, we want to make sure it's contained and operated accordingly. So a lot of these conditions have to do with making sure that those are being managed appropriately.
Okay. So things like the number of dog adoption days was more of a, that came from the city or it came from their mode of operation?
Right, right.
Well, I'm asking this.
It was consistent with what they were proposing.
Okay. So, okay.
You mentioned that staff would, would be larger, you know, it's because they're going, you know, they're doubling their size. Do, do we have a, is there a ratio here that they have to follow, or?
We didn't spell out anything in the conditions itself. But according to their operations, the way they do business in there, they have to have a volunteer or some type of manager or worker accompanying every animal on-site there. If they're outside of their confinement.
Related to item B under conditional use permit, have you, has the city talked to the other tenants at the retail center?
We do send out a notification to adjacent properties, and we have not heard from the adjacent properties. There might be some here tonight posing some concerns. But it is a part of our process to notify the other property owners.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. All right, if the applicant would like to present, please give us your name and address.
My name is Mandy Wyman. I'm the executive director at Carver Scott Humane Society. My personal address is 11601 Carriage Court, sorry, Eden Prairie, and that's 55344. So I don't have a ton to add. I know that Liz and I exchanged some emails today as I wanted to add some clarification points around the Planning Commission action that was requested. And you guys look familiar. I feel like I probably sat in front of you three years ago and we did this. To answer your question a little bit, to expand on why we had some restrictions the first time around, one was the nature of the space. We were in a very small retail front space. It was our intention to use it as a springboard to see whether or not we had the sustainability to support a bigger operation. We thankfully realized within about six months that we did. So that part has gone really well. The other component was, there was a gentleman who had property on the block at the time that wasn't in support of us being in the space. He had concerns about cleanliness, noise, and things of that nature. And so we also, in the effort to be good neighbors, were willing to compromise on those pieces for our operation in order to make sure that we are a good partner in downtown. So those, a lot of that, a lot of the documentation is somewhat like carried over from that original application.
Okay. And are there specific things here that you'd like to see changed now? Could you enumerate those for us, please?
Yes, please. So the first one that, is it okay if we just go off of that action requested?
Sure.
Line item.
Yeah.
Number four, where it mentions limiting the site to six dogs on-site at any given time, including but not limited to training classes and, oh, oh, perfect, thanks. Including but not, so everyone can follow along. Including but not limited to like the training classes and adoption events. At the time, again, the space that we were occupied, that we did occupy, was a very narrow but long space. So we didn't feel that we could safely move dogs in and out of the space. It was also exactly the same space where the cats were located. So part of that limitation was out of the comfort of the cats and not wanting to stress them out. Part of it, too, is wanting to responsibly give enough space between dogs, which is pretty standard in rescue and your dog handling. You don't want the dogs on top of each other going nose to nose constantly. Because of that, we kind of imposed those limitations as well. Now that we are in a new space, and this space is a prior doctor's office, which is perfect for us, it's aligned in a way that has two doors. It has an ingress and an egress in two different locations in the building. It allows us to move animals through this space even more safely and with reduced stress to the animals. The way it's lined up now, we could absolutely have multiple dogs in the space for an adoption event with plenty of space in between the dogs. We could definitely move dogs throughout the space if we did an intake with several dogs from local community and provide any sort of vet services or care for them and move them in a spa, through the space in a way that would still be safe and reduce any sort of potential for like any nose-to-nose interactions with the dogs. So because of that, we feel that we could safely have, I think I told Liz today, between 15 and 20 dogs in the space in a given moment. Now, the caveat to that is that's not going to be an everyday common occurrence. The idea is if we had a lot of puppies that came in all at once, which often happens, if we get puppies in, we get a litter of puppies and mom. So that could be, we recently had a litter of 12 puppies and their mom, which, poor mother. But like the piece of that is, that's way more than six dogs. Now, those puppies are confined in a very small, limited amount of space, but that instantly would put us over six dogs. And so then we're not even able to kind of provide the regular sort of operations that we would want to provide. So that's why we're asking for that number. We don't anticipate that to be a regular occurrence. The other component is, we would like to be able to offer wellness clinics to the communities, specifically targeting low-income folks in the neighborhoods and surrounding Chaska so that they can actually get wellness services provided to their pets at prices that they can afford. And doing that would mean if we held a wellness clinic on a Saturday or a Sunday, we might have a number of dogs waiting to be seen, and that dog, that number could be higher than six. They're all be handled by their owner, or if they were coming in to rescue for intake, they'd all have someone with them on a leash, and the dogs would all be leashed or kennelled on-site. But the idea is that we now have the capacity to be able to expand our services to the community, and we don't want the cup to kind of limit our ability to provide those services. If there was some sort of caveat in that, that was something along the lines of you couldn't have more than 15 to 20 dogs on-site, more than like once or twice a month, like I'd be completely amenable to that because, like I said, it's not a common occurrence. I just want to allow for it so we don't end up breaking any rules. The other one was the, number six, pet adoption days at the site are permitted at maximum of once per month. Again, because of the way that we do business now, we have open adoption hours. People are welcome to come in from the public, which they do very often, and it's really neat to see. People come in and they're interested in adopting a cat, or they're asking about a dog that we might have on the website, or they're interested in doing a meet and greet with a foster dog that comes into the space. We don't want to necessarily limit that to only happening once a month in a very finite timeline. We'd like to do it just like the Animal Humane Society would, or another shelter would, where folks can come in during open office hours and open business hours and complete an adoption and take a pet home. We're very invested in minimizing barriers to adoption, and so we view that as like minimizing a barrier, basically.
Could you read for me what the modified version of that says? I can't, I don't have it on my, I've had you and I can't read it that far.
For number six, it originally said, pet adoption days at this site are permitted at a maximum of once per month. Parenthesis says, eliminate entirely as they will not be holding pet adoption events at this space. It will be an open hours type adoption setup versus specific dates and events. Staff is amenable to this since it does not pose a traffic concern.
So your suggestion simply is to eliminate item six?
Yeah. I mean, we may on occasion have some sort of specialized adoption event there, whether it be a certain litter of puppies or something of that nature. But by and large, it would be a general rolling, public welcome, come adopt.
Okay.
The only other item that I wanted to mention, it is mentioned briefly in, I think we eliminated it for number five, but one of the, some of the narrative in the RFA mentions, I don't know if Liz, they got the revised in time, the?
No.
Okay. So some of the language in the RFA specifically references us taking in stray and surrendered pets. I wanted to make it very clear that we actually don't operate that way. We recognize and respect Chaska's ordinances, and so we have no intention of introducing like any sort of impound-related services for cats or dogs. We're not an open admission shelter. If folks do find a kitty on the street, well, we can guide them through a process of how to handle that situation, but we won't instantaneously take a cat in off the street. It's very important for us that we follow the Minnesota standards and their ordinances that require a minimum stray hold of five business days, which also has other requirements about what we're allowed to do in terms of veterinary care. Because we acknowledge that and abide by that, we are very strict about not taking in stray animals, per se. With regards to surrenders, all of our pets, anyone who approaches us interested in surrendering a pet goes through our For Keeps program, which is a program we initiated, initiated after our original cup application. It's a surrender prevention program. So we, actually, our goal is to continue to support the community with the pets they have and keep them in their homes. On the occasion that they do need to surrender a pet for whatever reason and we can't prevent it, we send them through that program first, and then we actually set up private surrender appointments. So that also would not be like an open admission scenario where people would just be allowed to come in and say, here's my cat, or my cat had a litter of kittens, here you go, like, or I found this cat on the street. We don't, we wouldn't be taking in animals in that, in that way. I felt that was an important distinction.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? Pretty straightforward.
Thank you, guys. We've enjoyed being in Chaska. It's kind of exciting since.
Thank you.
1989, so, thanks.
All right. And this is a public hearing, so at this point at 7:25, we'll open it up to the public for any other comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and take it back to the commission. Reactions?
I think it's, it's a good move for them. And I'm speaking personally from walking down Main Street. And it's, it was really loud at night with, you know, you'd see the cats in the window. And, and they were very calm, and I thought it was very, they did a good job running the business there and serving the public. And I think it's a great tribute to providing them an option to go into a bigger space. It'll help, I think, with, with a lot of the things that were changed here tonight.
I think it's well put together. Staff supports it. It's a space currently unoccupied, so I think it's a, it's a win.
What do we think about item number six? They want to strike it. I almost think it would be nice to have a little bit of both. So maybe limit the number of event days per month so that.
Although, as I understood it, they had kind of open adoption, so.
Yeah.
That could be every day a little bit.
Right. And I think that's good. But are there still going to be large event days, maybe? You want to clarify, Mandy?
Yeah, please approach him.
With regards to the event, there was a follow-up question about parking and availability in the shopping center. So I did follow up with the owner of the building, and I do have some additional information on that. So he essentially said that the space itself was specifically designed, when they designed the entire structure of the parking, the parking structure along with the shopping center, the parking was taken into consideration, and it has the, I believe he said it's one spot for every, five spots for every thousand square feet, I believe is the standard. And it does meet that standard. We, none of the spots are dedicated, minus three spots that are in the back of the building that are dedicated for our staff. But in the front of the building, we have approximately 12 spaces directly in front of us. But he said that all of the spaces aside the easement, from the easement for Cooper's, all of the spaces in that parking lot in general would be accessible to anyone visiting our space. I do think that in terms of events, that, that does make sense to some degree. We want to control any sort of like intense traffic along that side space next to our building because there are the townhouses behind it, and we want to be respectful of the folks that live there. The other component of it, though, is working, working downtown and having that space there, that street parking space. It just, I can understand where there'd be limited events with the parking down there as it stands. But in the space we have now, we're pretty confident, and the owner was as well, that we could host things like that and not impede other businesses. In fact, Little Caesar's and Rising Dragon have actually probably increased business since we've been over there. So, both very tasty, so, so yeah. I hope that helps a lot.
That's exactly where I was going, because if it's five per thousand, you would have access to 10 to 11 stalls.
Yeah.
On an event day, approximately how many people would, would be there at one time?
Right.
Including staff.
Right. And, and one of the things that is important to us is establishing good relationships with our neighbors. And like I said, Little Caesar's already a big fan. But they, we would absolutely be like inviting, whether it was their participation or giving them advance notice, letting them know if we were doing events that we anticipated there'd be larger numbers of people coming into the event space. The other thing we can do, too, is we have the opportunity, if we're promoting an event on social media, for example, say, here's parking, park here, and, you know, maybe even suggest they're parking in areas that are further out in the lot. And we'd be more than happy to accommodate that.
Right.
There's a lot of parking there.
Yeah, yeah.
But I understand that. I mean, when it's like dinnertime, it's a really.
Well, people never want to park like at the back of Cooper's. Everyone wants to park right in front of the storefront.
Which is fair.
Thank you. Then answer my question.
Any other comments? So let me ask the Planning Commission if they're in favor of.
Striking?
Well, striking number six and modifying number four to, from six to 20. That would be the two changes to the conditions that the applicant has asked. So is that?
Seems reasonable.
Okay. Well, then I guess I'd just like to add my comments that the Scott Carver Humane Society's been a great neighbor, and we're thrilled that you're here and that we like the services that you provide to our city. And I think this is a great improvement. So that you're expanding your services is good for Chaska. So, so I'm in support of this project with those changes. So at, at this point, I guess I'd look for a motion. for a motion to approve, subject to the now eight conditions as modified.
I'd like to make the motion to recommend the approval of the conditional use pro, permit to house and allow animals at eight twenty-two Yellow Brick Road, subject to the eight conditions that we just identified.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Kelly, and a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Dahlke. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we move on to item seven B, Public Hearing on the Zoning Ordinance Amendment to Section Five Flood Protection and Section Fifteen Definitions. Liz?
Thank you, members of the planning commission again. So we're looking at two zoning ordinance amendment requests tonight by the city of Chaska, one to our section five flood protection ordinance, and then one to our section fifteen pertaining to definitions. So to give you a background, FEMA is in the process of renewing its efforts to keep floodplains across the country free of obstructions, to inhibit flow, cause property damage, and potentially loss of life from such floods. So as a, as it pertains to that, FEMA's core duties and reasoning nationwide are, they're mandated to upgrade their floodplain ordinances to be both restrictive and consistent with their duties, so as to prevent any obstructions with floods. So in addition to revising some of the ordinance language that's applicable to floodplain management and updating that language, they've also have updated their recent maps pertaining to floods, so they've been able to do much more technical evaluation of floodplains and understanding where their flood limits are, so they've been in the process of updating their maps and finally have those maps put together with new effective dates as of December twenty-first of this year. So basically, these maps show where those floodplains are, what floodplain district certain properties are in, to basically show what type of restrictions or limitations and even conditions that might be applicable to any new construction additions and so forth within those areas. So with these new changes on the floodplain, they do not include any changes that affected existing structures within the city of Chaska, although property surveys are going to be the best source of information that can determine whether or not specific properties are within the floodplain or the base flood elevation or above it. So with these changes, it's not directly affecting anyone until they have to go through new construction if they're within a floodplain. So the ordinance changes are basically changes that are required by the National Flood Insurance Program that's in place with the city right now, and with that program, property owners do get reduced rates for flood insurance if they're in a floodplain zone. So the NFIP is basically requiring certain communities to update their floodplain management regulations and ordinances to be in line with these new floodplain maps that have been generated, but also to be in line with the regulations that they require in order to be a part of their program. So we are coming forward with you with an amended ordinance pertaining to our flood protection in terms of how properties within floodplain districts are treated. So the purpose of the amendment is also, also to include those newly created floodplain maps, which show the updated information within the city of Chaska, but also within kind of the state of Minnesota as well. So I'm going to kind of go through kind of the changes that are happening. So we're, we already have a floodplain or flood protection ordinance in place already. It's our chapter five ordinance as a part of the zoning ordinance, so we're basically coming forward with a zoning ordinance amendment tonight to reflect the changes that are being required by the NFIP. So a lot of the regulations and conditions and treatments of properties within floodplains are basically being carried over from our existing chapter five ordinance. A lot of the changes that you would see is, is due to reformatting of the ordinance, making it a little bit more clear for people who are reading it, and also including those new firm maps that are applicable to the city. So those firm maps basically show, again, where those floodplains and flood zones exist within the city of Chaska. So it's referencing those, those newer maps, and then also had a couple incorporations that are new to the ordinance itself, and that includes a section on the treatment of annexations and orderly annexation areas. So this is applicable to the city of Chaska, as we do have future annexation areas within the city in the Lake Town Township area and a potential annexation and portion of Dolegrin Township. So basically, the incorporation of this new language would say that properties that are within future annexation areas, at the time that they do get annexed into the city, will have to comply with chapter five floodplain regulations. We also added our own language in there for orderly annexation areas applicable to the Lake Town Township area that has orderly annexation air, over it. We have zoning authority over them, so essentially they have to meet all of our zoning ordinances and chapters within that. So any orderly annexation areas do have to comply with the chapter five floodplain or flood protection ordinance. So that's one new addition being added to this new zoning ordinance amendment. The other change is the firm maps have added a new, new flood zone district known as General Floodplain District Zone A. This new floodplain district is basically an area that's affected by the one percent annual flood, but it's an area that the base flood elevations are not shown on the map. So these areas would essentially have to go through any type of survey process to show whether or not they're above or below or in line with the base flood elevation of that specific area. So in terms of how this area applies to the ordinance, they would have to follow the floodway district standards that are applied within that ordinance. So it's a newly created district, it's basically showing where there's areas that the base flood elevations were just not shown or provided within those firm maps. Those are the basic additions added to chapter five. All the other pieces that you see in there are, again, carried over from our existing ordinance today, so not a lot of changes, merely just changes to reflect the new maps that are applicable to the city of Chaska. They did add a couple more definitions to the flood protection ordinance, which we carried over into our section fifteen, definitions of our zoning ordinance added to that section. So a couple of those, I mentioned all of them in my report, but a couple of them are the base flood elevation definition is added, the flood insurance rate map definition is added, lowest floor, what is that? And they explain that in the definition, substantial damage, and et cetera. So again, all of the newly added definitions are listed in your report. Those are just a few to mention, and these, again, are definitions that we, we had to implement and put in place as a part of our zoning ordinance as required by the NFIP. So again, all these changes are purely amendments with a couple additions to it, which, again, are just staying consistent and true to what the NFIP requires of communities to have in our regulations. So with that, we are asking you to make two motions tonight. One, to approve or recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment to chapter five flood protection based on the draft ordinance nine five six, and then another motion to recommend approval of the zoning ordinance amendment to chapter fifteen definitions based on the draft ordinance nine five seven. Happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, this is pretty standard protocol, and we have to get it basically approved and adopted by the city council before December twenty-first to stay in line with the NFIP's regulations and stay within the program.
Any questions for Liz?
Pretty straightforward.
We don't happen to have a example of one of their maps, do we? I'm just curious.
Not on me, unfortunately. They are pretty large firm maps, but no, I do not have one on me, unfortunately. Thank you. Happy to share them. They're public documents, so if anyone is curious to look at the panel that's associated with their property, we do have them on file at the city level, so happy to share those with anyone.
Good to know, thank you. Okay, well, this is a public hearing, so at this point, at seven forty-two, I'd like to open it to the public for any comments or questions relative to the proposed changes to the zoning amendments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and take it back to the planning commission. Any comments?
Pretty standard stuff.
I guess I would entertain a motion to approve zoning ordinance amendment to section five.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval to the city council of the zoning ordinance amendment to section five flood protection.
A motion by Dahlke, and a second?
Second.
Second by Bowie. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries, and I'd entertain a motion for approval of the amendment to section fifteen.
I can make a motion to recommend to the city council the zoning ordinance amendment to section fifteen definitions.
A motion by Cross, and a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kelly. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Onto item seven C, the concept plan for Structures Incorporated on Old Audubon Road. Liz?
Yes.
All right. We're looking at a concept plan request tonight specifically for Structures Incorporated, which is the business requesting approval of this tonight. So the subject site that we're looking at for this concept plan is highlighted in blue as a part of this aerial. So it's a vacant agricultural lot that exists today, basically sandwiched between Revue Circle and Arbor Drive. You have industrial properties to the north there, and on the eastern side, you have residential to the south, and on kind of southwestern portion as well. It has two frontages for this lot, so they're, again, sandwiched in between Old Audubon Road and Revue Road for this lot. I've also included a couple visuals looking into the site if we need a reference back to these at all, from looking east into the property from Ravu, or Revue Road, looking west into the property from Old Audubon Road, and then we also have a view looking northerly from Revue Circle. So in terms of a background of this site in particular, so going back, way back to June nineteen ninety-seven is when the East Creek Carriage Homes were approved, and those were essentially these, this property here to the southwest of the site. When it was approved in nineteen ninety-seven, it planted an outlot out there, Outlot A, which was basically disposed or as a disposition guided to be a track for future industrial north of the NSP High Line. And basically, when they say that, they're talking about the High Line Transmission Line that basically intersects this property from east to west. So they guided that area as industrial north of that area. It also disposed the south of that area to be residential. This area has developed since that time as residential, so now we're looking at the northern piece that was guided for industrial in nineteen ninety-seven. In terms of the business that's proposing to locate out there, they're known as Structures Incorporated. They're based out of Shakopee, so they currently have a facility in same type of operation in Shakopee. They specialize as a contractor for big block walls and paver stones for businesses, so they basically have a contractor's yard as, as a part of their business. So the new location that they're proposing in Chaska would essentially be their corporate headquarters for the business. It'll provide most of their office space for the employees that work for this company, but also provide another contractor's yard associated with the business. So they're proposing to have eighteen to twenty office employees as a part of this business, as well as two shop employees, people working in the kind of warehouse contractor's yard portion. So we have a, an existing survey of the property shown here on this slide. So the total acreage for this property is five point two five acres. Again, it's currently being used as an agricultural piece of property, as you can see today. There's a holding pond on the south side of the site that you can see in an aerial as well. Basically, that was put in as a part of that residential development to the south of them. Another big piece is, there is a significant easement that runs east to west in line with that NSP Transmission Line that is located on this parcel, so that's a hundred and twenty-five feet wide from the south line and into the site to basically encompass that Transmission Line area. As I've noted before, they have double street frontage for this property, so off of Old Audubon Road and Revue Road, and there's currently an access available to them off of Arbor Drive. So there's basically a private drive that extends into this site that provides access to the industrial properties to the north, but is also acts as a shared driveway for the development that's happening to the south here. So this was purely put in place to be an access point for this property. So again, we're looking at a concept plan approval tonight. They're specifically requesting the construction of a new industrial and office building on that parcel. They're also requesting an exterior storage yard as a part of that. Proposed within that storage yard, they want to store raw material for their business, and that would consist of pavers, block, and base material that they use to contract out. They'll have equipment back there moving the material around as well, and a truck and trailer that will run twice a week to do deliveries and take out material from the site. So in terms of the use that they're proposing out there, it does meet the guidance for this parcel based on those nineteen ninety-seven approvals, as well as what our CUP plan is guiding this parcel for industrial. So we have basically the aerial overlaid with the site plan as a part of this drawing tonight, or that I'm showing you on this slide, and I'll get to the, the colorized version of this, too, to kind of show some of those details as well. But they are proposing two accesses into the site based on this concept plan. One is being proposed off of Old Audubon Road to the south, so not as a part of Arbor Drive as they're showing it, which would essentially bring access into the front area of this site and provide parking for the employees out there and access to the building, which is highlighted in black here. The second access is proposed, proposed off of Revue Road, and this was purely put in place to provide a direct connection for their trucks to gain access to the storage yard. And I'll kind of get into our staff analysis a little bit later on, on these pieces. The storage yard is basically oriented on the west side, the building is oriented to the east side facing Old Audubon Road, so the storage yard is basically delineated by an eight-foot privacy fence, as you can see in white here, that will basically encompass the entire storage yard, but also run along that southern property line to provide a little bit more of a screen for the site from the residential. They've... out there, so it's again a prefinished fence, 100% opaque, and a little bit more decorative in style. I've also included some pictures of their storage yard in Shakopee, just to give you an understanding of kind of what they're proposing out here. So they've taken a couple images from that storage yard to give people an understanding of kind of that intro level detail of what's going on out there. As a part of the preliminary request, we'll obviously want a detailed drawing of this exterior storage yard to really understand kind of all that's happening back there and how we need to treat it in terms of screening. And then this is another concept plan, more colorized to give it more understanding of what's going on out there. So again, the building, they're proposing a 15,000 square foot building, one story in height. The breakup of that would be 10,000 square feet of office space, so that would be a majority of the building, and then 5,000 square feet oriented to the shop and interior warehousing area. Again, the exterior storage is on the west side here. They've included where basically the pavement is going to go, and kind of in line with the education that we were receiving earlier, they're hoping to do some permeable pavers in the back to basically support the storage area instead of doing full-on pavement. So staff will have to review that to ensure that that's a viable route to go. We don't want any storage on raw ground, open land. It has to be paved to some sort. If it can be permeable pavers to help with water runoff and allowing water into the ground, that's definitely a viable route as long as the soil and the land can support that. They have indicated that the material that they're storing back here will be no more than seven feet in height, and they are proposing an eight-foot privacy fence. So the purpose would be to screen everything with the fence that's being proposed out there. Landscaping is going to be a huge piece of this in terms of how we get to preliminary, but putting in a fence, they will also have to put landscape on the outward-facing portion of the fence to really break up the hard edges of that fence and provide a nice buffer edge to the residential to the south. They have indicated that they will be doing a crimson spire planting adjacent to the fence along its entire edge. We would just note that they should be putting in some coniferous plantings as well to kind of provide that all-year-round screening and buffer for that area. Another item of note and something that needs to be looked in a little bit more is how they're going to be providing additional screening to the site with an exterior storage yard. It's a very sensitive topic and one that needs to be adequately screened from view. It has to be completely screened in terms of the material being below it, but also provide a nice buffer edge to the residential to the south. So typically, what we encourage applicants to look in heavily at is the use of berming for these types of pieces. So as a part of their preliminary, as they gear up to submit for preliminary, we'll have to look at the potential of berming in addition to the fencing and the vegetation that's provided on the site around that exterior storage area. In addition to that, you know, once you hit a certain point in the number of stalls that they're providing, they do have to provide planting islands within their parking lot. So that'll be another piece that they have to address that their preliminary is the middle. Another item of note in terms of setbacks, so there is a significant setback from the south edge that you guys are all aware of for industrial properties abutting residential. So they do require a 100-foot building setback from that southern edge. Luckily, the NSP High Line easement takes care of most of that and provides 125 feet. However, that'll need to be carried all the way through on this southern boundary line. The storage yard will also have to comply with those setback, building setback requirements. So we'll have to ensure as a part of the preliminary that all those building setbacks are being met as a part of the site plan. They have provided an elevation drawing, a conceptual one of kind of the overall look of this building. So their intent was to try to provide more of a residential facade and street front to the building to basically be harmonious to the residential context that they're in. They're proposing a mixture of glass, stone, eaves, and metal cladding for materials, and we'll just stress like we do at all concept levels that they'll have to meet our building design and materials ordinance for industrial buildings. So that'll be their next step in the process is figuring out kind of their material composition and percentage makeup to understand if they're meeting those requirements. In addition to that, they'll have to provide 360-degree architecture specifically for the south and east facades of this building to really provide an aesthetically pleasing building within this area. They've provided a floor plan too, just to give you kind of an internal makeup of the building. So again, a majority is emphasized as office space and will be cubicle space for the people working for the company, and then the remainder on the west side of the building will be for the shop space where they'll store some of their equipment and do maintenance on their equipment within the building. So again, things that they need to work on for their preliminary is building design and materials, making sure that they meet our ordinance as it pertains to industrial buildings. They need to work on the overall layout. So one of the pieces that we highlighted in the staff report is eliminating that access on Revo Road. The purpose of Revo Road is meant to be a residential road. It should not be utilized as an industrial thoroughfare by any means. So if you even look back at the aerial here, this industrial property doesn't have access under Revo Road. So they gain all their access off of Arbor Drive there and Old Audubon Road. So we are asking that they eliminate that access entirely, do all of their accessing and operations from the east side where all of the industrial properties are being directed now. We are also asking them to basically flip their site plan to be in line again with this access on Arbor Drive, so providing that direct access into the site from Arbor Drive with the parking on the north side of the building versus the south side, and really try to find opportunity to make this more of a vegetative edge and softer edge for the properties to the south. So there might be some room to work with if we flip it around to provide additional room for landscaping within that area. We'll have to work with the applicant to figure out kind of their spacing needs and whatnot, but see if there's opportunities to get more of a vegetative edge there. Screening of the storage yard is going to be a big component as we come back for preliminary. So again, we've kind of referenced towards the utilization of berming, fencing, and landscaping as being kind of the best solution out there to provide the utmost screening efforts for the site. So as a part of that, when they're preparing for preliminary, we'll have to see multiple cross-section drawings and the detail of the storage yard to really understand what is being done to screen from the south specifically. And then we'll also have to understand the overall noise generation. How often are they going to be operating their equipment back there? They've given us kind of a preliminary or intro analysis to that, but we'll need kind of more of a summary as we gear up for preliminary. But at a concept level, there are things to work on with the applicant, but feel that we can definitely move in that direction of being amenable to some of those pieces. So we are asking you to make a motion to recommend approval tonight of the concept plan for Structures Incorporated based on the conditions that are laid out in the staff report. I also just want to mention too that for anyone who might be here tonight for this request, typically the item goes to the next council meeting, which would be next Monday. However, they have asked to move their council meeting review to Monday, January 7th, so that would be 2019. So if anyone's interested in that or following that, that is the city council date that they are geared up for. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know the applicants in the audience as well to help answer questions.
I have a little concern about talking of berming when you have a holding pond there and the fact that there's going to be an area that probably is not mowable, that is right next to the holding pond, and appearances and so forth. So I guess somewhere along the line, I think there should be some requirements or requests or something of how to maintain that appearance because right now with the way the building is placed, the one tree line, which I have a feeling is a soggy tree line that's in the middle of the, of their, some working with that so that we can establish a screening for the people to the south and still be able to have something look decent or finished, that's maybe the word I want to use, for their company to have right next to them, their building. Because a holding pond area will develop our friendly buckthorn and a few other things very easily, and somehow we'll have to have that looking somewhat tidy.
I have a question for Liz as well. The property across Revo Road to the west, how is that guided for development?
Just want to get to an aerial.
Next to the townhomes there, on the whole, between...
This?
Nope, no, to the west, to the west up towards Angler there, yes.
I believe this one is guided for open space.
Okay.
Yeah, and then medium density residential.
Okay, so that's not going to be homes looking at this fence is kind of what I was getting...
Right. I mean, again, that easement area basically encompasses most of this land as well.
Okay, sure, sure. All right. Thank you. Other questions for Liz?
No, I do agree though that I think that they should leave Revo Road alone. I agree with you guys on that one.
Okay, I believe the applicant is here.
Yep.
So if we could hear from the applicant, that'd be great. And again, a name and an address would be a great start, so thanks.
Good evening, my name is Daniel Anderson of D.G. Anderson Design Group Development, 3540 Montgomery Avenue in Dee Haven, Minnesota.
Okay.
Probably want to address a couple things on the, on the, I don't know, picture there, but the easement that's under the wires.
Yep.
So when we talk about a berm, when you say the word berm, the definition of a berm is it's not a very wide, it's more taller than it is wide typically, and you can't really maintain it, you can't do much with it. It's a cheap way of getting rid of your dirt or having a, some sort of a guidance, some privacy. We do intend to, we want to build that space up, but not in a berm fashion, you know, so you elevate the entire space up equally. So you probably slightly swale it up and have it more natural, and probably have it more wavy or moving around with elevation change a little bit to make it look more natural. As far as a finish on it, we're thinking more like a, you know, wild grasses, that kind of stuff. We can't do too much to it because it's there for a reason. There's maintenance, you can't, to say we put a berm there, it would be difficult to maintain, even though there's a rack stage holding the wires on a staging rack to the right there at that angle. The next one's across the street, so it doesn't affect them for maintenance so much. But at the east side of that pond, can't do too much planting in there, I think. I mean, we'd love to do planting, I mean, we'd love to graduate it in there and make it look more natural, but it just depends on what the easement says we can or can't do. But you could almost like, you could almost match it to like a golf course thought process where it's more moving, it's more wavy, it's not one long train-style berm, right? And we're okay having the back access go away. Other than that, I just think it's more about, there's actually really good soil there, obviously, because they plant there. I mean, it's, so to build that flat berm up on there, we could be six feet high and put our landscaping items at the height of that berm so you almost wouldn't, on this, on the south side, be very likely to even see the fence from the residential placement of those townhomes right there. So that isn't an issue. I think we can come up with a pretty good plan on that.
Yeah, and I think working with city staff, I mean, kind of what I think the planning commission is always going to look at is what is the impact on the neighbors? And it's residential and it should look nice and...
Yeah.
You know what I...
Yeah.
So...
And as far as the truck yard, it's not really a in-and-out every day, all day.
Yeah.
They might come get some equipment in the morning, but most of their equipment will stay on, on their project sites.
Right.
And they have these big concrete bins that hold, might hold, you know, fill, base. But we built the shop the size it was because in their current location, a lot of repurposed grain tile and kind of ugly things that they just get snowed on. So we built the shop big enough where it could all be inside. So really, it's just berms and maybe three to four pieces of equipment that stay out there, which is why we didn't pay the whole thing.
All right. Any questions for the applicant?
What's your, your address in Shakopee?
I'd have to look at that, it's in Shakopee.
Do you know Liz, or?
I don't.
Okay.
I'm sure I can Google it though.
That's fine, I can look it up too. I just...
Yeah, Structures.
Yeah.
So this is a secondary?
Right across from Billy Fair.
It's not a relocation, it's a secondary location for Structures?
No, it's a relocation.
A relocation, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. They don't have near the office.
Okay.
They're doing it for the office space, not so much the shop yard area because they're a national company, so they're trying to bring it all, make it more of an office environment. Just so happens that they do a decent amount of work in the cities, so they need a shop here to service it. But it's more for corporate office.
I do have one question. The architectural stylizing of the building, is that to show product in different ways that they have?
No.
No.
It wants to be more of a contemporary spin, a little more progressive, forward-thinking, like for instance, it looks like on the color render, which is just a sketch, but when you get to see the architectural plans, we're trying to make, we're trying to dumb down the size of the shop and the height of the shop and use the different color clads, different thought process, hire trees, hire things to kind of blend that in, but we're trying to keep the office at a low profile, so you graduate from the kind of a typical industrial and it works this way in the residential, because if you notice that the industrial's higher and the residential's lower, so we're trying to do this as we enter the residential space. So it's kind of a, we want more of a low-profile residential, but we're not, you know, if we do anything for product, it'll be, the actual parking will probably be pavers instead of black cotton or concrete. of black cotton or concrete.
And just to note, 591 Citation Drive is the address in Shakopee. 591 Citation Drive.
It's the uglyest building on the street.
Right across from Valley Fair.
Yeah.
So I got that. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
And this is not a public hearing, but I guess I would encourage, if there's someone that would like to comment, to go ahead and make your comments at this time.
I guess I'll make a comment. I'm actually a resident on the south side.
Come on up to the mic and then just state your name and address and then go ahead.
Derek Tesmer, 1336 Prairie Street.
Okay.
So I'm just on the south side behind the retaining pond there. Seems like a good structure, in terms of trying to make it fit in with the city. My one thing that was noted, but just to kind of reiterate it, was just the noise. I picture a bobcat backing up every day, five o'clock in the morning, they're, they're working outside in summer, long hours, so morning, super early, I don't feel like getting woke up because my window's open by a bobcat every single day in summer, so if they consider that, it'd be something to really consider.
Well, we'll get a noise report as for the next phase on this, so thank you. Others?
My name's Bob Butcher, 1342 Prairie Street.
Okay.
Right next to Derek. Again, one of my concerns is, is noise. I happen to be a safety manager for a bus company. When you fire up them diesels, we get complaints about our buses, and we're kind of in a residential area as well. Again, a good plan, I don't know if there's the, the area for a berm as well, because my house backs up to that pond, and I don't have any room from my backyard, basically, to the pond. And I don't know how far, far down you're going to bring that berm, but just concerns that we have as well.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Yes, sir?
Jim Ernst, 884 Arbor Drive. I'm business just to the north of this proposal. As it was laid out, I didn't have a problem with it, but Arbor Drive is a private road, it's owned by me, so getting access to it, you know, if the city wants to take over responsibility for that road, I don't have a problem with that, but having extra traffic that I have to maintain the road for would be additional cost to me. One other issue is that all of the drainage from those two companies to the north shoots right across that property to the, the holding pond.
Okay.
So something would have to be done to make sure that that water continues to flow in that direction, whether it be culverts or, or something. That's about it.
Excellent points, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? Okay, at that point then, I guess I'd like to take it back to the commission and, are there any comments?
I guess I have a question for Liz or Kevin. On the point that he just brought up on Arbor Road, are you guys aware of that? And what would be the work, work around there?
Yeah, we're aware that it's a private drive, but we're also aware that there is a shared driveway easement over it, so basically it intersects the slot as well, so we'd have to look at the easement documentation to understand kind of what was the agreement to put in place for property to the north and to the south, kind of go from there.
Okay, all right. And are we gonna, Kevin, are we gonna expect a, an engineer's assessment of the water situation there? So, all right, so that'll be part.
We'll get further, much further.
That'll be good, so, thank you.
I should probably address one thing for the applicant to the north. He has a big point on that, because you've got to remember, if we're going to come in on that side, you know, you can say you have an easement there, and yeah, we can come in there, but unless you paint a line and you put a rail up, the young guys that are driving these trucks, the young people, I mean, you'd have to make that whole thing a probably an eight-ton road, otherwise it is going to get tore up, he's right. Just keep that in mind. As far as drainage, yeah, we'll, we'll address that with engineer. As far as timing, we do have hours of operation, so that can be talked about as well, to make sure we're, making sure we're landscaping enough, so we're really screening closer towards the south property line, maybe not just a straight fence, but maybe some meanderings that looks more natural.
Yeah, well.
We can address.
There'll be a lot more detail on the preliminary.
So it seems as though there are still some open questions on the placement of the access for this, so.
We'll, we'll look further into the easement piece.
Okay.
But I think to the point of heavier duty road, no matter where those trucks go in, heavier duty road needs to be constructed.
Yes, yes.
So we're not talking about additional cost, because even if it goes on their own site, you're still building the same amount of road. You might just have to rebuild the existing driveway to facilitate and make it a better driveway.
Better driveway for both businesses, actually, yeah, yeah.
But that's a piece we'll, we'll take a look at with the applicant in terms of rights and responsibilities and relationship to the easement that's shown on the survey.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
But at a concept level, it looks like that could work, but there's many details to figure out there.
Okay.
And during the process of working through the details, then you, you involved the adjacent owner and everything? I assumed you did, yeah.
Okay, any other comments about commission? Okay, at this point then, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval of the concept plan, subject to the 25 conditions.
Only you have, apparently.
Yes. I'm right here, of course.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the concept plan for Structures Incorporated, subject to the following, let's see.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five conditions.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Bowie, seconded by Commissioner Dawkey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Onto item 7D, approve the concept plan for the S Lot and Ernst Home redevelopment.
Another concept plan request specifically for the S Lot and Ernst Home. So to give you an understanding of where that site is, it's located here within downtown Chaska, right off of Walnut Street. The properties are on the west side of Walnut Street, basically sandwiched between the city-owned parking lot to the south of them, and then Clear, Clear Soft Business is on the corner here, that sandwiches them to the north. So the Ernst House is there today, and you can see it on this aerial, and then the S Lot is basically vacant. There used to be another historic building there, however, in 2014, there was a fire that occurred and destroyed a substantial amount of the building. We did try to go through a process to save the building, since it was historically designated. We were unsuccessful in both attempts, trying to receive grants from the state to try to restore it, therefore, we did subsequently demolish the building in 2017 after those unsuccessful attempts. So today, it's a vacant lot. The Ernst Home was relocated from the Fireman's Park site where it was originally located, however, with the redevelopment of that park, it did trigger the need for it to be relocated in a much more appropriate setting for the home. So after this site opened up from the previous site, or previous home being demolished on it, we did relocate the Ernst Home to the site as its new home. Another item of note that we're in the midst of going through is we are actively working with a reputable architectural consultant, McDonald and Mack, to try to get the Ernst Home as a part of the contributing designation status within the National Walnut Street District. The purpose of that would be that it would open doors for us to get tax credits through the state, which would ultimately help in, in trying to aid this project. So that is kind of an ongoing effort that the city will be pursuing as a part of this project. The city does own both those parcels that we are looking at, so just keeping that in mind as we're kind of going through discussions on that. So we own the parking lot to the south, the Ernst Home lot, and the S Home lot, so three lots all in line. Just a little bit of a historic background on both those sites, so 211 Walnut Street, also the Ernst House site. The building itself was built in 1884 by Andreas Riedelie on the Fireman's Park site. It's a classic Chaska brick T-plan crosswing home. And then 2000, or 217 Walnut Street, which was, which was the former S House site, was built in 1886 by Joseph S., who was a notable family member within town here. That was also a Chaska brick home, but was later covered by Stucko, and then subsequently demolished in 2017 from that fire. So we're looking at a concept plan request tonight specifically to redevelop the S Lot and then restore and renovate the Ernst Home, both located on 217 and 211 Walnut Street. So there's, the applicant tonight, which is Talley and Associates, are specifically requesting to put seven rental apartment units within this site, which would be composed of three different buildings. So the first building, the Ernst Home, would encompass two apartment units within that, one on the first floor, one on the second floor. A new townhome-like building is proposed on the north side on the S Lot, and will have three units within that building. And then they're also proposing a new building on the rear side, or the west side of the site, behind the Ernst Home, and new townhome building that will basically house the parking garage, but also have two apartment units above it. And then the parking garage and parking lot, surface parking lot, are located on the west side, or in the rear of the site, gaining access from the alleyway. So they provided an existing condition survey or plan as a part of this request. So in total, we're looking at a site that 0.4 acres in size, both parcels are roughly 0.2 acres apiece. The S Lot is vacant, so it's suitable for redevelopment on there. The Ernst Home is currently sitting there vacant, so ever since it has been relocated, the city has been actively marketing the site with the S Lot for a potential redevelopment project opportunity there. So we finally have an applicant interested in the site to develop it for rental apartment units. Both lots do have access onto the alleyway in the back, and this alleyway basically runs north to south and connects Second Street East with Third Street East to the north there. This is the site plan that they've put together to show basically how the buildings are situated on the site. So you have the Ernst House basically in its current location, which will be maintained. The townhome building is located directly north of this building. They are planning to make this as one big lot, so as opposed to two different lots, so just keep that in mind. So the townhome building is just to the north, and it's basically running in line with the same setbacks that are applied to the Ernst Home, so really providing that consistent streetscape as you're coming down Walnut Street. The parking garage is located in the rear of the site, and that will house seven interior garage cells, one for each unit that's being proposed on the site, and then the surface parking lot will be adjacent to that with six parking stalls there. So all of these units will be two-bedroom units, with the exception of one of the units in the Ernst House, which will only be one bedroom. So the amount of parking that they're proposing out here is basically a one-to-one ratio, and will be adequate for what they're proposing. All of the units are showing direct access onto the sidewalks to Walnut Street, so each of the townhome units will have their own direct access into their site, and that would be true for the Ernst Home, and then there will be circulation provided in between the buildings, in the rears of the buildings, into each of the garage stalls, and back to the surface parking lot. So a couple talking points that I want to note is this concept of a paseo. So with the alleyway in the back there, when we went through our downtown master plan, this concept of a paseo came up at that time. And the purpose of the paseo is meant to be basically an alternative pedestrian route for people wanting to travel north, north and south, and avoid traveling along the busy Highway 41. So it provides basically a buffer area, an alternative, a more pleasant walking area away from kind of the heavy traffic of Highway 41. A couple concepts have been produced to kind of be in line with this paseo concept. It's been brought up during our City Square West project, but there was also a design scheme put together on the east side of 41, as it goes through this block in particular, and I'll get to that and the concept in just a second. So with that in mind, with this paseo concept and overall future plan for the paseo on that alleyway being more of a pedestrian thoroughfare, it will be important for kind of the westerly side of the site to be sensitive to those future plans. So how are they going to be addressing that parking lot edge to the paseo? What will need to be kind of implemented back there to provide that buffer and appropriate edge for people who are going to be utilizing that area? So that's something that the applicant and staff will, will have to continue to work on as they prepare for their preliminary submitals, is how that edge gets treated and provide a nice aesthetically pleasing edge to the people utilizing that paseo. And that kind of comes in line with the landscaping component. So with it being on Walnut Street and having some significant frontage there, and having their own accesses into each of these units, it'll be important that they provide an inviting, but not obscuring landscape design in the front. But also, how can that transition even to the rear to create some, some nice buffering and vegetative edges for the site? So this is the concept that was put together by HKGI to show that paseo concept running through this block of the S Lot and Ernst Home. So essentially, it would be lined with brick pavers to connect back out to Third Street and Second Street. There, there will be some gateway elements at the beginning here to really direct people and pedestrians through this thoroughfare and so forth. So this is kind of an overall design concept for the streetscape improvements that have been happening in downtown, but as well as that paseo kind of running through the block A couple other talking points, so in terms of parking, as I've mentioned, they're providing a one-to-one ratio for the site, which staff believes is adequate for what they're providing out there. It's also important to mention that with the looming Highway 41 improvements that are going to be happening in the next couple of years, they will be taking the street parking off of Highway 41. So there's always been this talk of where extra street parking can locate within downtown to kind of make up for what's been taken away from the improvements on Highway 41. So one of the areas that's been referenced and identified is the expansion of the city-owned parking lot to the south. Couple concepts or drawings and plans have been kind of looked at for potentially putting a second level over that parking, surface parking lot. for potentially putting a second level over that parking, surface parking lot to provide more parking in downtown. So kind of hard to see in these drawings, but provided them as an attachment for your packet is kind of showing how you would basically access that second level parking over the city-owned parking lot to the south there. So access was always shown as a part of the Ernst Home and S Lot site. Basically due to the grades that kind of occur as you come south, there's a much higher grade on the Ernst Home and S Lot site that would be able to achieve a second story above the city parking lot from that side of things. So that was the most feasible way to basically provide that second level to this existing parking lot is coming from the north of the parking lot and connecting into the site. So with that in mind, it's important as this project continues to move forward that we're slating that as a potential for the parking lot to be able to provide that second level parking. So looking at how their parking lot and south edge of their site is really planned to be able to accommodate those types of improvements. So that'll be an ongoing discussion that will have to be had with the applicant to ensure that doesn't get nixed out of the project in scope. They provided a couple of floor plans and footprints of what they're proposing out there. So this again shows the three different buildings and their footprints on the site. The three units and the townhome building will essentially be two-level units as they're proposing it. The Ernst Home will have, again, two units, one on the bottom floor, one on the top floor. And then the two units are located above the proposed parking garage. They've also incorporated the floor plan for the Ernst Home in terms of how it would be organized and programmed for each of these apartment units. So they're showing the first level top here and then the second level on the bottom here. So essentially, in order to get access to the second level apartment unit, they are proposing an exterior staircase to access that unit as it's basically the only way to access that unit without significantly impacting the interior of the Ernst Home and the other apartment unit. This isn't an uncommon thing in downtown with an exterior staircase leading up to a separate unit on buildings. So we'll have to work with the applicant on kind of the overall design of this and ensuring that it's a minimal element added to this building since it is historic and ensuring it fits in with the rest of the building. They provided a couple of options in terms of the elevations proposed for that newer townhome building. So option A is on the top here, kind of reflecting more of a similar design and roof profile that you see on the Ernst Home. They note this as option A, some dormer elements and some of that front porch aesthetic that was basically reinforced from the Ernst Home. So all of these units will have their own access again from the sidewalk level. The second option is more of a contemporary option and look that you see with more contemporary apartment units. Our HPC did have a chance to review this concept plan before this meeting tonight and did reference that option A was the preferred route and seemed more appropriate. It's not necessarily this is the design, but they did like the qualities that they were seeing within that elevation. So as it relates to the architecture, it's important to note that this is located in a national historic district and the Ernst Home is locally designated as well. So being sensitive to that in terms of the new construction and how these newer pieces relate with the Ernst Home as well as the national district is going to be important as they move forward with their designs. The Ernst Home is going to be relatively unchanged. They'll do some maintenance to it to basically restore it back to working order, fix some structural pieces that they need to do on that building. But other than that, it will basically remain as it originally was. They are proposing to use a Chaska brick blend on the townhome building to, again, try to provide a compatible look and palette with the adjacent buildings around it in the historic district. The parking garage should also be in terms of the design that they proceed forward on that. Again, with it being the main building that's facing the paseo area, its western edge and even its south edge are going to be important to provide that 360-degree architecture and more of an aesthetically pleasing edge for people who will be traveling down the paseo or utilizing the parking lot on the south side. So they'll continue or have to continue to refine the details on these plans and the design and so forth as they prepare for preliminary. We did note, you know, some potential in looking at other Chaska elements within downtown and other Chaska buildings to use as reference or pieces to be inspired by or incorporate into the building. So they'll have some work to do as they prepare for preliminary and working on the architecture for the two new construction buildings. So with that, we are asking you to make a motion tonight to recommend approval of the concept plan for seven apartment units on the S Lot and in the Ernst Home, subject to the conditions that are listed in your report. I'm here to answer questions, otherwise the applicants are here as well to help answer questions.
Any questions for Liz?
Yes. Since I once upon a time was on the historic committee and so forth, I really will just say that I don't think parking ramps have any place in historic districts, so. And also on that subject, you had talked about the grade change. And yes, I think we're going to have to be real cautious about the grade change. And I'm also hoping to have a real good engineer report about the Ernst House because they're moving internal walls. And in old brick buildings, sometimes that does not work because we've had old Chaska brick buildings fall down in the past. So those are my two major concerns.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I was thinking similar to Commissioner Cross here with some of the parking amenities that we were considering and thinking, is that something that has been talked or discussed where we could go down as opposed to up?
Not sure if that alternative was explored because it's not feasible at all.
It might be something that would be able to be a little less intrusive in nature of aesthetics wise for the neighborhood, just a thought.
Question for Liz. What is the change in elevation on the two combined lots? I mean, is it more of a change in elevation from north to south or more from east to west or both?
It's probably more on north to south.
More north to south, okay. There's some east to west too, I think there, yeah.
East to west is pretty significant. Apologize. My name is Nate Gold and I'm with U+B Architecture. We're working with Ethan Tully as the developer. So can I?
Sure.
Actually, I'll go to the existing. It's a little hard to see. Generally, grades do, it kind of runs diagonal. So the high point of the site is definitely this northwest corner. Low point is the southeast corner. There's about a five-foot difference this direction from the west side of the site to the east side of the site and roughly four north to south. So it's more or less kinked.
I think that's all I have for you, Liz, unless anybody else has a question for staff.
No.
Okay, then I guess at this point we'd like to invite the applicant up to share your thoughts.
Thanks for your time. I'm Laura Russ. I'm with Talley and Associates. And the address is 470 West 78th Street in Chanhassen. So we're really excited about this opportunity. It is really a unique opportunity, I think, for us and for the city. And really, we are interested in it is really, I think, for three reasons primarily. One is the opportunity to blend the old and the new in this historic way. And that's why we partnered with U+B, who's working on the livery house, or worked on the livery building and is working on the Klein House because we really wanted to bring that component to this as one of the main pieces. The other thing is it really expands the diversity of housing choices here in the city. New, well-designed housing in your urban core is not easily available right now. So we think it's exciting to be able to expand that as a housing choice. And then also, you know, we are long-term owners and managers, so we designed it with a sense of, as rental housing, is this manageable in a responsible way? That's partly why you don't see a lot of common space. We have private yards and private, and not a lot of interior common space as well so that we can be sure that it's well-maintained and not, you know, not contributing to any kind of issues in the neighborhood. So we'd be happy to take other questions. I think Liz covered really all of our main points with the development, but we'd be happy to take any other questions you have.
Questions for the applicants? I have several, actually. So these are market rate units?
Correct, right, yeah. We anticipate these all as being market rate.
And with the changes in elevation, just looking, for example, at the two apartment or townhouse units with the parking underneath, does it start underground and go to grade or start at grade and go up or what does that look like?
Sure. Our anticipation with this parking lot here is that this is all surface parking lot. And this is more or less all at grade. So each one of these garages here would go at grade. We would likely be elevating grade here a little bit, so this is instead of sloping down.
So these are not stepping down at all?
No, no. I think our expectation would be that we're changing grade here to be more or less level. I think there would likely still be some grade down here. I think drainage right now happens along this edge.
With some type of retaining wall or?
Yes, so there's an existing retaining wall, modular retaining wall that separates the parking lot from the structure. We anticipate that there's some work that will be happening with that retaining wall as a part of the project.
And you had a concept drawings there of an option A and an option B for the facade. I can tell you, option B has no chance.
Well, that's the input that we got from the HPC as well and I'm not surprised. I think the intention with option B, because this is kind of a more commercial neighborhood, I've got to defend it a little bit being the architect that worked on it, was that, you know, it was a kind of a bridge between the commercial side and the residential side. And there are the townhomes that are just north of the Klein Mansion that have a very, you know, they're flat roof, they're very commercial. So it was a sense of, is there some context that we can pull from to do this? Again, like I said, I'm not surprised. I think even with both option A and option B, this is really early on for our design study, especially if we're pursuing tax credits, I think there's going to be a lot more input into what those elevations look like, so.
And a couple of other just observations for you. You know, the, we've had a lot of discussion in Chaska about, you know, the use of tan brick, you know, Chaska yellow brick. And there are examples in Chaska of that being done very badly and there are examples of it being done very well. And I would point out the Walgreens building as tan brick. It doesn't look historic at all. It doesn't look like it fits with the character of our city. And there are other buildings, the Rick Ford's building between the two Klein Mansions looks, you know, it's new material that speaks to the history of the city and that was done very well. So I would encourage you to take a look at some of these other buildings. It doesn't have to be tan. It could be, you know, an integration of colors that just speak to that history, but it has the articulation that you saw, you know, 100 years ago, 200 years ago when they built these buildings. So please take a careful look at that. I'd also ask you to look, think very carefully about how, what you design along the parking, along the alley there would feel and look to a pedestrian because that paseo concept is something that we value a lot. And it has to feel safe and it has to look nice. Even though it is parking and it may be through planters or bollards or benches or something, but please take that into account as you look at that edge of the property. You know, it's, sure, it's in the back, it's in the alley, but it's an important edge the way we're envisioning the use of our downtown over time. So I would encourage you to look very carefully at that. And then finally, my observation is it seems really dense for that property. It seems like a lot of units to me, but, so I don't know if it has to be that dense or not, but maybe it does to get the economics to work. But that's, seems like a lot of units for that amount of space.
I can just add one response. Although it's a small site, it's a surprisingly difficult site to program. And we looked at over a dozen site plans, I think, and this was actually, I believe, the least dense one. And because obviously, you know, the temptation is to go up and we really did want to maintain the scale and to go underground with parking to be able to provide that type of density, it becomes prohibitively expensive. So this was where we landed on, and why we landed on the number.
And then in regards to your comments about, you know, the architecture, especially on the backside of this and the brick as well, I mean, I couldn't agree with you more frankly because I think, you know, the visibility, because of the parking lot that's here and the program that's envisioned for the alley, I completely agree that this facade is almost as important as the front facade. The model that we have here with the garages and the units above, kind of a carriage house style, we haven't had the time frankly to look at that yet, but we're really excited about the opportunity that presents. And I think at our next meeting, we would certainly have imagery very similar to what we're seeing for the front facade for that back and side facade as well to share with you.
Also, that carriage house style is actually consistent with the use of the house. I mean, this house didn't necessarily have a carriage house as far as we know, but it would have been consistent with that context, so.
And what, do you have a sense at this stage at what, which facade of the Ernst House would have the staircase to the second floor?
Yeah, we actually know precisely, there's an existing door that's kind of a split-level door. And it is.
So it is on the east side there of the building? Okay, that's probably the, when I look at that, that's where I would put it. Not knowing how the building is constructed, but just, I think visually, the odds of making it look natural are better on that side, so.
I just have a comment. I think the design plans are beautiful. I too prefer option A. And I'm really happy to see that you brought in U+B. I mean, they have a lot of recent experience in the city of Chaska. So I think that they'll do a great job in making it look like a part of this historic district, so.
And I do want to comment on Commissioner Cross's concern about the structural issues. We have had our structural engineer come in and take a look at it and then we'll be sharing a lot of that with the city. A lot of the masonry walls, those are walls that we're not touching as a part of this project. If you're familiar with the livery, we did some structural gymnastics with that building. We're not going to be anywhere near the gymnastics with this one. It'll be much more straightforward.
And the livery looks great, by the way. We really like what you've done with that, so. But I will also just add on to what Commissioner Cross said about a parking garage in that historic district. That's a tough one for me too, so. You know, that block's an important block. It's.
So is parking.
Yeah, and so is parking. You're right. And we've had many, many discussions about where does that go?
That's a huge issue.
Thank you. At this point, I'll take it back. At this point, I'll take it back to the commission for further discussion.
I'm happy to see something planned for the site. I think it's much needed in that area and it's, especially at a concept level, it's well-thought-out and looks to be fitting for the area in sight.
Yeah, I think the Paseo concept is a good thing for that, you know, for tying in with the, with the street improvements and coming from City Square Park, you know, just down south that way. Should be pretty cool.
I agree.
Well, and I think seven more housing units downtown is good for downtown. And if we can make the back look as nice and as appealing as the front looks from the concept drawings, then I think we've got a winner here, so.
I've been walking past that lot for about this last summer quite a bit and thinking, gosh, it'd be great if something would happen with that. I wonder what happened? It's just sitting there. And now I understand much more with some of the planning that's been going on around it. I have bought products over at Von Hansen Meats and I have been a little bit skeptical in the evening to be able to walk down that alley. It's been a little bit scary to me and I've walked around back on the street simply because of that. I was a little bit leery. I don't know who's back there or what's going on, but maybe it's something that needs to be lit up a little bit more, so thank you for recognizing that.
Neighborhood fire pits. Okay. All right, any other comments?
Okay, I'd look for a motion to approve the concept plan for the S Lot and Ernst Home.
I'll make that motion to recommend to the city council approval of the concept plan for seven apartment units on the S Lot and Ernst Home, subject to a 13 conditions.
Motion by Commissioner Dolkey in a second. Second by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Onto item 8A. Receive other beating minutes. We don't need a motion for that, so we'll just receive those and move on to other business.
Just go around the horn. Sure, I've got a couple of things. I, in driving up 41 the other day in the evening, it was really nice to see the tree that was added again in the back of Fireman's Park. It looks a wonderful addition. Again, it really kind of helps bring the downtown a little bit more alive and with the seasons. Another note, I would like to thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to contribute as a planning commissioner. I've really enjoyed my stint and will be, this is my last meeting this evening, and will miss contributing to the city of Chaska and providing things. I would also like to thank Kevin and Liz for their support in contributing to my knowledge and understanding of what it was to be a part of the planning commission and also the commission itself, so thank you.
Good luck, Charles, in Carver. You're going to a good town, so.
Be very lucky.
And, yeah, and Commissioner Kepner, I wanted to mention, along with the tree, the work that the 100 Club does, you know, for that whole thing. It was a very good experience again this year. Good party and stuff and really enjoyed that. One thing, and I don't know, Kevin, I think I read it in one of the other minutes, are we still, are we looking at, it's kind of screwy, the, up at the Quick Trip, the getting in and out of the parking lot up there. And I don't know if the orange stick thing there, is that a temporary deal? I don't know what you can do to improve it, but it's.
Well, the city can't do anything because it's a county highway. And so, we're interested to see where they're going to go because that was their low-cost option that they chose, and it's obviously not working.
Because people are still pulling out of that front parking lot and now they're just driving around the sticks and, which is even worse than it was before.
It's less, in my opinion, as a traffic engineer, appears less safe than the old option.
Yes.
And something has to happen there and I don't know exactly what they're doing, but I know the council and the engineer are talking to their respective parts, I believe, to see what they can do there. But, yeah, I think everybody's in agreement with you that it's not optimal.
Well, I can give my favorite county commissioners in earful, too.
That would be wise.
I don't have anything.
And I don't have anything.
And I will just add to what Commissioner Kelly said about the trees in Fireman's Park. Also notice this year, one thing that's new, that it looks so natural and like it just belongs that you might not even realize it's new, is all the smaller trees in front of the big tree are lit up this year as well, and they look fantastic. So, that's the latest addition from the Chaska 100 Club.
It just looks wonderful.
It does. It looked very appealing and inviting space over there now, so that's, we're happy to see that. And finally, I guess I'd just like to comment, after nine years and three terms on the planning commission, it's time for me to pass the baton to somebody else and it's just been an honor and a pleasure to serve, so thank you.
Great work.
With that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
In a second? All in favor? We're adjourned. Thank you.
Congratulations. And you as well.